Good evening. It is Tuesday, August 13th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting to order. Mrs. Schultz, will you call the board?
Trustee Mark Meyer.
Yeah.
Trustee Birding.
President.
Trustee McAfee.
Yeah.
We have with us this evening Deacon Rick Rader, who will lead us in our invocation, and then we will remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Loving God, you're the builder of all things. Please guide our Fairfield Township trustees, staff, and administration in this meeting. Help us to come up with effective strategies that can enable us to move forward as a team and as a township in a meaningful way. Help us to generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implement it. Guide us toward the best way to take action to accomplish our goals. Help us to tackle all the topics we need to discuss. Come up with excellent solutions and leave this meeting inspired and on time. Amen.
Amen. All right, our first thing that we have under items for board discussion is our department, the new hires.
Did you want to start or do you want to?
Yeah, I'll start.
Okay.
So, we continue to struggle with our part-time staff. We're to a point now where not only are we seeing very few applicants, the ones we do get in, we're not, we've had two in the recent past that we weren't even able to get on shift before we lost them to full-time jobs elsewhere. So, we're struggling. So, what we're asking for is six additional career spots to fill the gap of the part-time positions that we've lost and continue to lose, which I think will help long-term with stabilizing the schedule.
What's our cost impact?
Julie, do you have the numbers?
So, based on if you view approximately 110,000 per employee, and then it's to be decided on if the board decides to move forward with a deputy chief, and I estimated it roughly at about $800,000. And of course, that will, over time, it will compound with increases in salary, et cetera, et cetera.
Do we have a funding source in place for this?
So, the budget each year is set for a certain number of positions each day. Half of those positions being filled with full-time. We've not been able to support a fully-staffed shift at all this year. So, that money in part is there, but we will incur additional costs. Now, some of that can be offset by moving certain responsibilities to certain people, which will allow us to pay them out of our EMS fund, which will help. But some of this money has already been budgeted.
So, can you give me an idea, and I don't know how to do this right now, but what the cost differential will be? So, I know we've allocated a certain number for those certain slots. We've budgeted for that. We're just not currently using it. I would just be curious what the differential would be, because I would imagine that's going to be not so much an hourly, but probably more of the benefits. So, I think that would probably be the biggest change over our current. So, I'd be curious what that would be.
And to trustee Birding, I don't think we ever answered your question. I did a very short PowerPoint, and basically Fairfield Township, they've been, you as a board have been very wise. The income streams have been diversified as economic development has come into play, and the jet money was pooled from the general fund. The general fund has been protected. So, at this point, here are your TIP funds. This is how long, I'm sorry, how long, three. And these are the main ones right now, but we did just establish the Bridgewater Falls tip that hasn't started generating income yet, and then the Seward Road tip. There's going to be additional buildings and they aren't filled, so we're going to see more, well, this is based on the value of the property, but you're going to see that increase as well. So, and the Princeton Road tip, which is approximately 1.5 million, and in the Story Point tip, approximately 517,000, and in the Seward Road, approximately 303,000. And the annual income of each respectively is 2.8 million, 325,000, and 350,000. And I anticipate Seward Road to grow exponentially, and then the Bridgewater, new Bridgewater tip to take effect. The jet funds, so in the past, when I first started employment here, the jet funds were a part of the general fund, and we pulled those out. And in the past, in the decade I've been here, the jet has been used probably twice, and the current balance is 3.7 million, and brings in about 600 to 700,000 dollars a year. The nice thing, which I know that I've talked about this, for the debt that has been incurred as of December of 2024, you will see approximately 791,000 dollars that you'll no longer be paying. Then as of mid-2025, you'll see 526,000 retire, which is a total of 1.3 million dollars. And then the final debt retirement is 2027, and then the township is tax-free.
Debt-free.
Debt, tax-free, debt-free.
Tax-free was last weekend.
Debt, debt-free, yes, and next year. Please, yeah, make sure those minutes are correct. So, the ask was for a deputy of training and operations, six full-time staff, and that brings a full-time number to 32. I've already talked about the average cost. And it is the opinion of staff that to stay competitive, it's imperative to continue to move to a full-time department. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. And I believe that right now, the fact that the debt is retiring and where those TIP and jet funds replenish very quickly, especially compared to your levies, you know, your fire fund is driven by a levy, and those amounts aren't going to change unless there's a new levy. So, you do have the ability as a board to use TIP funds, and there is enough to supplement that difference. And it would just be a matter of how many years you would want to do that. But I do believe eventually, as we've discussed, a buyer levy would be needed. But for right now, your two, three, four years that you would be able to sustain this.
Thank you. So, currently, we're having part-time people fill these shifts.
Correct.
And sometimes we're paying them overtime.
Full-time people were paying overtime.
Full-time will pay overtime to fill those shifts.
Yes.
Okay. And so, the money that we would be paying full-time, because we'd have more people, be savings potentially for those shifts. Right? So, really, the difference is the benefits.
Sure.
We would be paying those. So, really, the increase is not really 110,000 per person. It's whatever the benefits are for that person. Okay. Which is like, we figure 40,000 at half. Okay. So, $50,000, 55,000 per person. Okay.
Wouldn't there still be some additional manpower? So, there's going to be a cost somewhere. It's not going to be a cost from the overtime or the part-time.
I understand that.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. Right? I'd ask for some additional information, and I never did get it.
No, I can get you anything.
The runs and the staffing. I'd like to see how it all lays out. We do still have some debt, because the board, two to one, just borrowed some more money. Remember, 1.2 million dollars on the Seward Road, and we've got to pay that off for the next 40, 50 years.
Using the TIP funds, yes.
But we still have debt, right? You said we'd be debt-free or tax-free, but debt-free, two to one. Because we still have that, right?
Yeah. Well, we're not, you are not the owner of that debt. It's carried by an hire.
We're just paying it.
Well, you are, yes. That's how we set up that economic development.
Yeah, we're paying the debt. It's the township one to one.
Correct.
So, we still have the debt. You know, if you look at the cash summary for images you lost, your fire fund, and I'm sure you already know this, there's 123,000 dollars in it.
I do.
That's it.
We're about to receive a second tax settlement.
EMS funds is also going down. So, again, I'd like to see an updated list. Shelley, if you could give us an updated list on the debt and the actual sequence of when we'll have that paid off?
I have that as a summary. I can send you that.
You don't mind?
I don't have a hire on it, though, because we don't.
Well, do we, because we just, we just sent the check.
So, we actually don't.
Yeah.
We, it comes out of the money.
Comes out of the TIP account, which is our money.
Yeah. Well, I don't pay that.
Right. You're not writing a check for that.
Right. But I will send you my notes.
But if you could, that would be great, showing us the amounts and the time sequence. I know we talked about it being in the next few years, we could possibly be debt-free, and then we wouldn't borrow any money. But if you could get me that information, that would be a big help to me. I still think as a board, we should designate, have a consistent plan for how we're going to pay for any additional people. They may have been bugging you for this year, but until last meeting, I didn't realize we were going to hire six more people this year. And when we started this process, we were hiring paramedics, because we couldn't get paramedics. And we hired paramedics, and we just kept on going, hiring EMTs or paramedics, whatever. And I'm not saying that that's not okay. I'm just saying that's not how we decided to move forward, and that we kept going. So, I'd really like to see us wait a little bit of time to see the real numbers go through the system for what we have. I'd like to see us apply for the grant. You know, applying next year is going to help us if we hire those six officials.
Sure.
I mean, those are just some things that I had thought of about the additional manpower. We, we are yet to have fully staffed based on the number we wanted to have years ago. And I have to keep asking, what is that number?
Right now?
Yeah.
Eleven, 13? Eleven's the minimum. Eleven's the, their 13th.
Plenty of times in the last 10 years, we haven't had 11 either.
Correct.
So, I mean, the idea is that we're saving money by not having those people work. That's not exactly what it is. We want to know what it's going to cost us when we have those 11, those 13.
Sure.
How many do we have now?
23 total.
How many do you have working right now?
Seven, full-time.
And again, I'd like to see the real numbers as that goes to payroll and the new contract and all of those things. And we're just talking about people, right? Not about the new truck or the equipment necessary.
So, humor me. With our current staffing levels, you know, I think we're authorized for 13. Do we always get that 13?
No.
Why?
A lot of it, a lot of it is really heavily dependent on part-time staff. Half of it, essentially, is dependent on part-time staff. And of the 18 part-time people that we have working a set schedule, 15 of them work full-time jobs somewhere else. And unfortunately, that simply impacts us.
How so?
Training, trades, overtime, those sorts of things.
And I believe that they're called into their full-time job, we're the second priority, and they call us and say, we can't make it.
Correct.
Correct?
You can't mandate, essentially.
And we can't.
You can't mandate part-time people.
Okay. So, tell me about our full-time labor pool. What is that looking like? I know you talked about that a few moments ago, but can you tell me more about that?
Coming out of schools.
Uh, why, why is it so difficult for me to find part-time staff?
So, the reason is, full-time fire departments are actually paying decent wages, and the kids that are coming out and getting full-time jobs at 19, starting in the, most of them in the mid-60,000 range, they don't want to work a part-time job.
Okay.
That's a huge factor.
Okay. So, we're having to compete with that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so, what's your strategy then for competing with that?
So, it's competitive wages. Obviously, with the negotiations that's ongoing, there are some things that'll happen with that that'll help us compete. And really, the biggest thing that I'm seeing a change in is culture. It's the culture within our fire department. We are a back-to-basics-focused fire department. And it's making, it's making changes. It's making improvements already.
Excellent. So, if we don't authorize the hiring of the additional people, what does that look like for you? What are the implications?
So, right now, without a good number, a good stream of part-time people coming in, it simply looks like an increase in overtime for us.
Okay. And how is, is that going to impact cost?
Sure.
How so?
So.
Tell me more.
Annually, I want to say we spend somewhere in the range of, and I'm trying to recall exact number, somewhere in the range of 70,000 to 80,000 a year in overtime. We're in the ballpark of 105 already this year, because of how short we are.
Okay.
So, it's significantly going to increase the cost in overtime.
Can you give us that number?
Sure.
What we are using, what we were the last couple of years?
Okay. And so, 105 already, and that's just for six months?
Most likely higher.
Okay. That's just for part of the year?
Yep.
Goodness. So, we're on track to maybe hit 200 for that?
Correct.
That's almost 2 FTE, isn't it?
Correct.
Would it be a benefit to maybe do, because the safer grant, how many is that usually for? Three?
It's up to you. It's up to how many.
Okay. What's our track record? I know we haven't had, we haven't really received a safer grant.
So, from my understanding, the financial situation the township sees itself in usually ends up getting our grants rejected.
Okay. So, I mean, I too would definitely like a safer grant. I think we all would. But do you think that that's likely?
I don't.
Okay. So, if we don't, so besides overtime costs, what other things will be an issue if we don't move forward with these positions now?
That's really the most significant issue.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the overtime.
So, let's see. That's, we'll just ballpark, we'll say 200,000 in overtime. And I think a few minutes ago, didn't we just say that the uptick of, or the increase would be about 50,000 in benefits?
Yes.
So, that's approximately for, for full-time people, that would be the cost differential, wouldn't it? And it looks like we're paying that anyways in benefits. Interesting. What else do I need to know about this to make a decision?
Right off the top of my head, I can't think of anything else.
Okay.
But I think we've covered quite a bit.
Okay. Well, and I agree. I think that there has been, you know, it's difficult, and not necessarily through the fault of Fairfield Township, but it has been difficult to meet those staffing levels. And I think if we, if we don't move on rather soon, it looks like we're paying the money anyways. And we're also possibly not getting our shift, our shifts properly staffed.
Correct.
Am I wrong?
No.
What other questions or comments are there from the board?
Well, I've always been in favor of hiring more firefighters, but I do understand trustee McAfee's position, that he would like to get more information about the costs and funding source. It's on our agenda as the first read to authorize these six full-time firefighter paramedics. And I know I'm ready to vote one way or the other on this. But I do, I do feel like it would be fair to, if trustee McAfee would like to get the information that he wants to feel comfortable voting for this, that we should keep, we could keep it as a first read and have it on the agenda next month to vote for or reject. That's just my opinion. How do you feel about that?
That's fine.
It is a first read, I think. I know we discussed it last time, last month as well. We did ask for this to be put on the agenda, but I would feel better knowing that all of us had the information that we felt comfortable with having in front of us to vote for this, because this is significant. It affects many things. And I know where I'm at with this, and I have a feeling you are, you know where you are with this, but I do think it's fair that all three of us should be comfortable voting on something one way or the other. And if trustee McAfee feels like he doesn't have all the information that he would like to have to make a sound decision in his mind, that maybe we should just leave it as a first read on this agenda and have it ready for next month to vote on it. And that's just my opinion.
I appreciate that. You know, we really didn't have a discussion last time. We had a presentation. He asked for six, and that was pretty much it.
Okay.
And I think that was the first time we really heard about that. You know, one or two, where would you get one or two? Have you got people working part-time for us that we might see a woman go to work?
We do.
That need all the requirements that are already in paramedics?
No.
So, I just wondered, I wonder where we'll get them to begin with, or in the end, maybe. But, yeah, I think, I think we ought to have the whole thing laid out before we.
Is there a number, a number of firefighter, paramedic personnel that you would be comfortable with voting for now, that you could say, well, I can, I'm willing to absorb at least this much dollar figure in the budget and give the chief the authority now to start interviewing, like starting tomorrow or whenever, and then come back with the rest of that number next month? Say like, hey, I'm comfortable with three. Could we do three this month? Let's get the numbers and vote for three more next month. That would give the chief an opportunity to start the process of getting those bodies in our firehouses.
The cost-neutral perspective is four. I mean, we could, so three could possibly.
I'd like to see that backed up with some numbers.
Well, that's, I really like.
Other than, other than just round, round terms, say even 40 here and 40 there.
I like that train of thought. Let's be really specific about the data requirements. So, trustee McAfee specifically said that staff can prepare. What specifically would you like to see?
I'd ask last month for the staffing levels, the number of people working, where the vacancies are.
Okay. So, Mr. Bird.
And he said he could get it to me.
Are you?
I expect him to.
Let's, let's get a list. I just want to be really specific with that.
I'd also like to see what we have done right now. And, you know, if you look at payroll, and I'm sure you guys did, payroll in the last two pages was $50,000 more for the last page than it was to pay before. Wow. What department is that? And see where we're going to be at the end of the year, based on our current staffing. We haven't done yet. We've had no complaints running at this, that, this level. And as I said, we all know, the two, two accounts we're using are not going to do it. So, I'd like to see that projection to feel comfortable adding any more people.
Okay. So, Chief Bird, can you read back the four pieces of data to make sure that we're all on the same page with that?
So, you want to see the cost differential between full-time and part-time, the vacancies, where they are, why they're occurring, a projection of cost with the increase staffing. And then you mentioned an increase in payroll?
Just to be clear, that was likely due to the retro of the police contract, because we did have that.
I didn't know.
Yes.
But I saw it, and I was like, what is this about?
Yes. We had the retro for, from April 1st on for the police.
You can, you can do that, right? You can take our current staffing as of August 1st for the fire department and make some assumptions on what the numbers are going to be.
Yes, I think I know.
You know, appropriate everything we have and say, hey, we sold less than what we appropriated. Because that's what some people like to do. And see what the real number is. You know, and I've known about this, hiring full-time, saving money on part-time. This, this is nothing new, right?
Right.
We've been dealing with this forever.
Three years.
So, so again, the idea is, what is our payroll going to look like at the end of the year? What's that cost going to be? And then if you want to add those six more on top of that, taking some average, I just, and then I think it's a multiple responsibility to say, hey, we know we're short in these two accounts, and then you need to say what it's going to be, where the money's going to come from, instead of just wandering around check to check.
Okay. So, can you please read back those things and make sure that we're all on the same page with this?
So, vacancies, where they are, what they occur, cost differential between full-time and part-time, real numbers, and what's payroll look like years in, including adding the six that I requested.
What else is there that we need to include?
Well, you could, since we're talking about this, you could also give us that review on the five-year capital plan, what we're looking like for equipment.
So, are, Chief, are those numbers that you could get to trustee McAfee within a week?
Sure.
Okay.
And I'm certain you'll work with the administrator to pull that information together.
Okay. So, if you could do that, and that way, we have plenty of time to evaluate it. And just send it off, well, send it to Julie, and then Julie could send it out to the three trustees.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. And so, I would trust that we'll, we'll have a discussion about that at the next meeting.
Yep.
And just for reference, you all have the bond summary now, so you can look at when debt will retire for each bond. I emailed it to you.
Thank you.
Would you put me a copy?
Yes.
I just showed it to on the PowerPoint.
I believe it wasn't that PowerPoint that you just presented a few moments ago.
And we won't wander around with salaries. We, I would recommend the TIP. So, there's no wondering. And I would never recommend something that would put us in jeopardy for 10 years. All we've done is improve. So, just, I appreciate everything that trustee McAfee has said, but we are diligent and watching every day, and I communicate closely with all the department heads. So, thank you.
Just include all those numbers in the data. That's great.
Okay. Anything further on that?
No.
All right. I'm looking forward to seeing that information. The next item, the fire department engine repair and replacement.
Yeah. So, our 2012 Sutfin, which is referred to in the firehouse's engine 213, was found to have substantial cracks in the subframe. This is essentially where the body is reinforced and mounts to the actual frame of the truck. To be completely honest, it did not come as a surprise. While we can't be 100% sure where the damage actually occurred, our best assumption is the amount of years that it spent pulling out of the old 212 on Tylerville is the cause of the damage, the angle coming off the drive, right? So, for that repair work, we're looking at some significant work to remove the body, reinforce the broken areas, re-weld, and install some reinforcing plates around all the broken bones.
What's the price on that, please?
32. It's under 32?
And that was all in the package, just the frame?
So, no, there's, they were actually digging into some engine work when they found the cracks. I'm sorry, right. So, there is some head gasket work that's part of that price, but the significant impact is the cracks.
And it looks like you rebuilt in the engine.
The top half, yes.
Okay. Anything further on that topic? Any questions from the board?
So, it's out of service?
Right now, yes.
How long has it been out of service?
Probably a month.
How long's it taken?
They can't say yet. Not until they pull the tank out. I would assume. I would assume they'll start relatively quickly. So my, my best guess is a couple of weeks we're going to complete everything.
Are we short an engine, or?
Short a reserve engine.
And what's your plan for mitigating that while that engine is out? Is there an issue with that?
So, no, we have a second reserve engine.
Okay.
That we simply use if we need to.
Okay. So it's not impacting operations?
Not right now.
Not until something happens. That's why you have a reserve.
Yes, that's right, yes.
Okay, anything further on that topic?
No. I do have an item, another item for board discussion that I didn't, that I just realized on the way over here. I do have a conflict next month on the 10th, and I didn't know if the trustees could look at their calendar to see if it's possible to move it one day forward, one day back, or to a different...
Yeah, CIC too, just so you, you know.
I apologize for not giving you a heads up, I just realized it. I was getting in my car to come up here.
So it's not the whole week, it's just that day?
Just that one particular day, the 10th. Does any day flexible?
I could do the, well, I can do the 11th after, probably after seven fifteen, seven I can do the 16th and 17th.
I'm also, I'd love, if you wanted to move the meeting to the morning, if you wanted to have a...
Can you do it Tuesday morning?
I can do it Tuesday morning.
I can do Tuesday morning.
Let me see, just...
It would just depend on, well, in this CIC meeting, we can probably hold that if we're not here, if we can't get that moved on the other...
I think you're coming back for another time.
I could do Tuesday morning.
Staff is coming back for another time, be that like...
Right.
Other than just have one meeting.
Yeah.
I'd rather move it to a different day than if, with the CIC being...
We could still move it to the morning, move it to the morning.
I like the morning. Is that, is there an issue with staff? Are you comfortable with that? That might be a good thing, actually, so you're not out waiting on a Tuesday night. Okay.
As I say, I won't be able to make it, but with being a Tuesday, I'll have staff here, that's how.
Is that an issue, Mrs. Van der Hoorn?
No, not at all. You just tell, tell us what time, and we'll get it noticed and make it happen, what time would everyone prefer.
Do you like earlier, the better, correct?
Um, no, no, yes, about eight thirty.
Like 5:00 AM, is it?
Five or eight thirty.
Okay. Eight AM, that's good.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty, okay.
I'm in staff, usually you're around eight thirty or nine, right, so...
Jeff's like seven.
So, eight thirty on the 10th, correct?
Eight AM.
Eight thirty AM. I, I really do appreciate you being flexible with this.
Well, we have talked earlier this year about possibly running some meetings during the daytime and, and the morning, and I think staff would probably appreciate that. So, yeah, I think that's a good thing, we should probably do that more often. All right, anything further on that section?
I'm just suggesting we wait a couple of weeks before we announce it to the public, just in case anything else changes between now and then. Oh, we need 24 hours, anyway.
Okay.
All right, no one has signed in, so I will dispense with reading the communications section. We'll move on to consent agenda. All items under consent agenda are considered by the Board of Trustees to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any trustee may remove an item from the consent agenda by request. No second is required for removal of an item. Items removed for separate discussion will be considered after the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda items.
Second, any discussion?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
And the consent agenda has passed. That includes all the way down through fiscal officers' report. Mrs. Schultz, what do you have for this meeting?
Uh, just letting you know the audits are ongoing, don't want to have any information about that, and we did get an opioid settlement for forty-four thousand since our last meeting. I thought you might want to know that for a later resolution. Unless you have any questions, I don't have anything else.
What, what account would that be in?
We have an opioid fund, it's 2909.
One Ohio.
Yes, one Ohio.
Okay, next item, this is the administrator's report, please.
Thank you, I just wanted to talk about Pacha Truck and how wonderful the day in Abenler, and give kudos to all the staff, the planning, the teamwork. We had, we ran it, we did not have, and this is not an offhand Kinko, they were gracious enough to let us use their area and pay for some of, they paid for the train and the bounce houses, but we came together and it was fun, there were so many families just to greet and welcome, and as we pointed around where everything was, we were so appreciative, we received compliments, and the fun part was, we had balloon columns and things that we cut down at the end and gave them to all the kids, so the fire department really helped there, and the kids were loving that, we had face painting, I mean, it was just tremendous, like, the staff was just remarkable. So, thank you all, and I'm glad that that was something we could do for the residents, so thank you to the board.
Excellent, thank you. Anything further? Okay, we'll move on to resolutions, may we have the first resolution, please?
Resolution 24-116, authorizing fire chief to execute agreement with Butler Tech donating international ambulance in exchange for the cost of two paramedic classes.
Who's to adopt?
Second, any discussion?
Tell us about it.
Yeah, so this is a similar agreement that we've done in the past. This is for a 2016 international ambulance that's going to go to the high school program here at Butler Tech in exchange for two roster slots in upcoming paramedic classes. So the one change we actually did this time is we didn't set a dollar amount on it, we left it open just as the cost of the class, because we're always going to see increases to that kind of stuff. So it'll cover the cost in full.
Great, this is something we have a history of doing, and it's, it's just part of our very good relationship that we have with Butler Tech.
Correct.
Okay.
And tell us about the, the vehicle with Traden.
The vehicle with Traden, Traden is a 2016 international ambulance that we bought used two years ago. It's seen minimal frontline service as a reserve, it's actually a second reserve, to which we've spent more than we actually spent on in, in maintenance. The, the maintenance costs have far exceeded the value of the vehicle in a very short amount of time.
And do we have something that's going to take its spot in the rotation?
Right now, no, but we do have one on order, so yes, we will.
A year from now, we'll have...
Correct.
Have a, a new front line. And right now, the value on that would be what, 2,000?
If we're lucky.
Twenty thousand, I mean, what?
Yeah, it's in the two, in the $20,000 range.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah, 20 to 25, yep.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
I'm saying.
And that passes, may we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 24-117, authorizing the creation of a full-time deputy chief position in the fire department.
And this is a first read with an option to approve, so we can move forward with this tonight, clearly, or if we'd like to think about it some more, that's fine, too.
This is someone taking the place of the assistant chief.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Who's to adopt as a first read?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused, do you want to, do you want to keep it as a first read, trustee McAfee?
Yes, for some of the same reasons, just like to see the whole status of the fire department.
Okay.
Is there a second on proceeding with the first read? Okay, due to lack of a second, that does not carry.
So I'm just, the motion to adopt as a first read, that language just kind of confuses me a little bit, so, to my understanding...
Is the first read, I mean...
Well, I think you just leave it as a first read, don't have to have a motion, keep it as a first read.
Correct, so if you're going to take no action tonight, if you're not going to adopt the resolution, you can have a read and then just move forward.
Yeah, just read it and then we move on, we don't have to have a motion to do anything with it. And by not seconding the motion, nothing really happens, because it, it's just a first read.
It's a first read, we just move on to the next resolution.
Yeah, I'm, I'm finally leaving as first read.
Okay, so just to be clear, is there any other information that we would require from Chief Berger in order to make a decision on this at the next meeting?
Nothing, trustee McAfee just wants the same information to make a judgment on both resolutions, correct?
The whole, the whole thing, I also would like to see, I know you, you told us a little bit about combining the two, I'd like to see a full job description, maybe a hiring process, how you're going to go through that, if you've all got, you know, if somebody picked out, or what the process is going to be, testing and all that kind of stuff. I mean, really, this position would be, would it be a second in command?
Yes, essentially.
So, I mean, that would be my next information I would want if, if we decide to move forward.
Let me ask you a...
And I could have said that next month, but...
Let me ask you a question, trustee McAfee, if this information is given to you within a week, let's say...
Tomorrow.
If this information is disseminated within a week to you and you get a chance to read it, could we, in a week, have a special meeting to act on these items? Or would you truly want to wait until September the 10th?
You know, I'm not about waiting, so once I get the information and can work my way through it, I'd be ready.
Would you let Mrs. Van der Hoorn know, like, hey, I'm the same way about to repair on the truck?
Okay. I couldn't believe we waited 30 days to have, so we could vote to repair the truck.
So I think that should be going forward as well, like, if there's a repair on the truck...
Yes.
If we need to have a special meeting, I think all three of us are pretty much...
Said that before, we've said that before.
Yes, well, I'm just saying it again, so everyone knows, and that goes, that goes to a snowplow, that goes to a police vehicle, fire vehicle...
Like the police car gets stolen?
Yeah.
I do have a point of clarification, I think we did just find out about the truck repair issue.
We just got the price.
We just got it, yeah, we just received it, yes.
We weren't waiting in order to get that done.
So if you could get that to trustee McAfee, and then when you're more satisfied, you can let Mrs. Van der Hoorn know, and she can contact, and the board chair, the board chair can then call a meeting, a special meeting.
Yeah, I think, I would...
To approve these positions if necessary. So you okay with that?
Yes, to vote on, yes.
Perfect, awesome. So even if it's next week sometime, we're, we're bolded.
I'm fine with that.
All right.
Okay, so that one will be essentially tabled.
Which is a first read.
Right.
So is the resolution 24-18, right?
Yes, so do we need, from a procedural standpoint, can I, for 24-118, do I need to read that one and go through the motions?
Call it.
And then we just move on without go?
Yeah.
All right, may we have resolution 24-118, please?
Resolution 24-18, authorizing the creation of six full-time firefighter, paramedic positions, first read with option to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Van der Hoorn.
And due to no motions on that, we, as we previously discussed, we'll be getting together here in the next week or so to cover that. All right, may we have resolution 24-119, please?
Resolution 24-119, authorizing a contribution to the Bayfield Prevention Coalition in the amount of $10,000, this refers back to the last meeting.
Who's to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion?
This money comes out of the...
Opioid, which is the one Ohio, it's 66,000.
Right.
See, it's not in the resolution, I'm lost, hold on.
Well, it says use of one Ohio funds.
I see that. 2909. Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes, that resolution passes, may we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution number 24-120, authorizing the execution of the contract from Butler County for the community development entitled, entitlement program, CDBG.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion?
What's the difference between 120 and 125?
Check this, as you...
Yeah, sure, so 120 is the formal agreement with Butler County for the actual execution of both, of the CDBG projects. This is a formality that they introduced, I think, within the past couple of years, this wasn't something we did previously. The, what was it, 21, or 24-125? This is acknowledging an increase in the pricing, so we had a, a grant amount of $300,968 approved for the Peter Avenue project, but the bid came in over that to $306,000, the 306,000, 316 dollars and one cent, and that resolution just acknowledges that the trustee will pay that difference.
The $8,000?
The $6,000.
So all we pay is $6,000.
For that, for the, for the project on Peter, that's, yeah, correct. Well, and, and in addition to the, whatever match that we agreed to initially when we received the grant, which is typically 10%, so 36,000, the trustees will be out.
So it makes reference to two resolutions from last year?
That's right, so 23-131 and 23-132, those were the resolutions that, I believe those were the ones where the trustees acknowledged the reward.
The deserved grants, yeah.
And they accept the agreement.
Yeah.
And now we're doing it again?
They are, they're, with accepting the funds, yes, we're doing it again. That's how I also see it.
Project one, the best bid came in, we were about $306,000. They're exactly the same except for that one line, aren't they?
Any further questions or discussion? There's a motion and a second, Mr. Schultz?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
That passes, may we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 24-121, authorizing the administrator to execute a nat, national, sorry, a natural gas aggregation agreement with a supplier recommended by Energy Alliance Incorporated.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion? Can you please elaborate on the, this change? I know we've had them in, there were some changes, please give us an update.
Sure, the highlights, the rate for energy, .585, since the rate is indicative, well, it was indicative of the morning that this email was sent, but it's a 30% reduction for communities that are currently at .839. Duke's winter 2024, 2025 is forecasted at .68 to .72. Term November 2024 bill to the October 2025 bill, no termination fee... twenty-five bill, no termination fees, letters mailed in late August through early September. I had to send this, I believe I emailed this to the board, but if I did not, I'll look back, but through that answer
This is what usually happens, they
Correct, yes, what they do is shop, they shop and shop, and if they feel like they can't be competitive, then they won't ask any of the local jurisdictions, including us, to sign, so as they chase the rates, when they feel like they have found the best rate and the one that is going to benefit people the most and save them the most money, that is when they ask us to lock in.
That's where we are, that's what this is.
Correct, and it is about thirty percent different, so it's, it's a reduction and it is a savings.
And as usual, residents can choose to utilize this or not utilize
Absolutely, it was, yeah, it was voted in by the residents, but for anyone that decides to opt out, there's no hassle, no termination fee, and I have found Rich and Dan Dieter, they are remarkable with assisting customers and always responsive to me.
Okay. There's a motion in a second, any further discussion on this topic?
I'd like to at least see the rest of the information attached to the resolution, if possible, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so I would just ask that after this, assuming that this passes, that we include that additional, maybe a brief write-up or what happens with the resolution?
I'll forward the email.
Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAdie?
Yes.
That passes, may we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-four one twenty-two, approving repair of fire engine two thirteen from Specialty Truck Repair Incorporated at a total cost of thirty thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and forty-one cents.
Who's to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion beyond what we've already talked about this evening?
So you said they were doing engine repairs when they found the other problem?
Yep.
What happened to the engine?
Uh, the head gasket.
Blue and?
There's no telling why.
How many hours or miles, how they measured up?
So it's hours and miles, I can't give you that right now, I don't have it.
Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee McAdie?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes, that passes, may we have resolution twenty-four one twenty-three, please?
Resolution twenty-four one twenty-three, authorizing administrator to execute contract with Noblecom Incorporated to upgrade the weather sirens at a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars.
I move to adopt twenty-four dash one twenty-three.
Okay. Any discussion, can you please elaborate?
I'd be happy to, Chief Burden's more of an expert, we have basically five sirens and the one on Tyler'sville Road has recently been upgraded and I'm very grateful to Captain Peters who, he is taking on routine maintenance and logging and tracking sirens, everything with the sirens that would include testing them, checking them, making sure everything's stable, so he is going to give a semi, quarterly or semi-annual report to me, just so we know that everything's working properly, that keeps the residents safe, so that's, in a nutshell, basically, we're looking to upgrade, just because we found some issues, they are older and with the recent weather especially, that reinforced the need to be ready.
Sounds proactive. Any further discussion?
What, I mean, they're still working?
Apparently we have five sirens in the township.
Mr. Peters, would you mind just approaching, so we can, thank you.
Well, I can answer that, if there's four that aren't working properly.
Correct, so there's, we have five, apparently four of them are eighty percent of them are not working, it's due to various issues, I sent that over to Julie, it was batteries, battery issues, so each siren takes four of the larger pieces of semi batteries, those are not working, those need, all need to be replaced, there was a charger retrofit that they needed to put in, there was a whole list of items, so we, this all started because one of the residents called and informed us that the siren up here at Creekside and Route Four is not working, so we looked into that, I contacted EMA, had a discussion with them, and they said that they had somebody that lives across the street from St. Saint Christian, Maforian and Morris, calling saying that one wasn't working, so I had Noblecom to check them all, and that's when we found out four to five were not working, so.
Was there any reason?
Yeah.
And I did it not to exceed, based on our conversations, because they may find there could be some on a hidden battery or cost, and I didn't want to hold up those repairs, which is, so we have a quote that's attached, but you'll see that not to exceed is, is a little bit higher in case we find something.
So we got the quotes for the repairs for the four sirens, they did check the fifth siren, so that'll be like a service charge, and then kind of look at the one on Tyler'sville, they cannot check it out, it was fine, and I'm working on getting a quote from them for a contractor, they'll come out annually and services, so it don't end up twenty-five grand and, or twenty-two grand, whatever it was, and the whole trying to get them back at the park, so when I get that, I'll send that over to Julie, she can forward it to you guys.
Appreciate that, it really doesn't say anything on what we got, other than the money, that's all, I mean, it says repairs, local repairs.
There should be a list, there should be a little
Well, I'm just saying, that's what, that's what I had in my package, four, three thousand, thirty-six hundred for two and sixty-four hundred for the other student, it just says quote for repairs.
See, this is one siren, each siren had its own page, so
I can make sense of that.
So it is quote, yeah, it says quote for repair, weather siren, that'll keep that seventy-four, seventy-four more some one, six to seven eleven more shirt on the other, Route Four and Milliken on the other, and Route Four by venture on the fourth.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I did, didn't say anything other than what was wrong with it, so I'm glad we found this out, it's too bad the residents had to tell us that they weren't working, especially with the crazy weather we have, so we're not replacing them, we're just updating them?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're not, they're not being replaced, they're just giving them up to where they're working, batteries, control box, the one up here, by Route Four, it has a control box that holds all the electrical components out of it, and it's rusted out by my guy, two grand, surprised it hasn't fallen off the floor yet, but, and I can, I'll re-send those quotes to Julie and then she can forward them, because under each quote, there's an additional page that shows what, you know, but each siren needs done, so.
And I don't need to see that, I was just confused by this, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
And, and any idea when the last time we did anything to them?
I don't know.
Nineteen ninety-seven, when we put them in?
I do know the one on Tyler'sville was hit back in two thousand and nineteen in the place, which is probably another reason it's broken, because it was dressed back in two thousand and nineteen, so, I mean, it, it's been a while, I mean, nobody, none of the current command staff for the fire department, Chief Burden, he's been four captains, myself or three shift captains, have never had anything to do with that, so.
Yeah, we installed them in ninety-seven or ninety-eight, somewhere along back in there.
Yeah, I think exactly a grant.
It might have been a partial grant.
I know, I know a lot of communities like Liberty Township, there was them, but they ran a partial grant, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'll do it, it's been about to my attention now, and we'll keep on top of
Appreciate it.
Fortunately we can get back and
Right.
Well, maybe we could check the batteries when the clocks fall back and go forward.
Well, to make this program, that might be a good way, if we get a decent price, you can check them once a year.
We can check them like twice a month, fire going off at like midnight and see if they're working.
I know the one outside of D Russell Lee works, because I hear it every Wednesday at noon.
Yeah, Tyler'sville works.
That's where I'm hearing it.
Yeah, so, yeah, Tyler'sville, now, they might, they might have got the one, because Noblecom checked the one across from D Russell Lee, and he said that was not operational.
I hear it.
But he did, I mean, he tried to fix the vessel, so he may have, he may have got it up and running from time being, just so we have something.
Yeah.
He didn't mention that to me, but
Well, tomorrow is not the first Wednesday, so, I heard the last Wednesday, I mean, no firm fact, so maybe it's just not operational where it's receiving the signal to an emergency, that's possible.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good possibility.
But I haven't heard it tested, so. All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAdie?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes, that passes, may we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-four one twenty-four, authorizing the administrator to apply for the twenty twenty-four nature works plan in conjunction with submission for the new pickleball courts.
Motion to approve twenty-four dash one twenty-four?
Second. Any discussion? Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAdie?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes, that resolution passes, may we have resolution twenty-four one twenty-five, please?
Resolution twenty-four one twenty-five, authorizing the payment of increased costs for the previously approved CDBG funding for the Peter Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project.
I move to adopt one, or twenty-four dash one twenty-five?
Second, any discussion?
This is for the six thousand, this is for the business, right?
Yep.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAdie?
Yes.
And that passes, committee reports, TID, Trustee McAdie?
Uh, no report.
And I will follow suit with that, EMA, nothing to report there, OKI has not met in July and August, and nothing to report on that, what comments?
No comment other than, it was a great ribbon cutting today at Convent Raros for the Fruitables, that's it, right? Fruitables? Fruitables, so, it's a pretty, great story about a young couple that loved going to one of their favorite places and decided to bring that into Fairfield Township, so it's a great story, great location, I hope everybody has a chance to go check them out.
Okay, agree, I'm glad they're there, I'm going to be back, I had the thing that I had this morning was delicious, and I will definitely be going back for more of that delicious and healthy food that they have.
I have a feeling your kids are going to be going there more often than you are.
I would think so.
They were all of that.
They were all of that, I spent a lot of money at Fruitables.
Don't give them your credit card, though.
I think that Fruitables actually gave twenty percent of their proceeds today to a local charity as well, so that's
Yes, to do with adopting children.
Yes.
Focus on youth, I think, was the name of the organization.
That was a really, really cool give back. Okay, announcements, steering committee meeting will be Monday, August nineteenth, at six o'clock PM, our offices will be closed for Labor Day, Monday, September second of twenty twenty-four, don't forget, we've got the Patriot State Festival, that's Saturday, September seventh, from nine AM to nine PM, CIC meeting right now is currently on here for September tenth at seven PM, but as we all discussed earlier, that might be changing, and right now we have our Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September tenth, not at seven PM, but at eight thirty AM. So, in accordance, executive session in accordance with ORC one twenty-one point two two, section G one, to consider the discipline appointment, employment or compensation of a public employee or official, and with ORC one twenty-one point two two, section G four, to discuss collective bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation and other terms and conditions of employment, I move that we go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAdie?
Yes.
We will go into executive session at approximately, let's see, it's eight oh four now, at eight ten PM, action may or may not be taken as a result of executive session. At, we'll move to executive session, everyone is willing, if they're welcome to wait, or depart.